I guess, because I've only got myself, Amy, Bob, and Carol. AWS, that must be the contractor, right?
Anthony Stewart have just shown up.
Okay.
That's Commissioner Stewart, so we're good.
Okay, good.
All due to my delay, just came out of another meeting. Happy to see you all.
I'm here also, this is Mackenzie or Commissioner Davis speaking. I apologize, guys, I cannot for the life of me get my camera to work. I think it's my firewall or something. I'm going to try to fix it by our next meeting. But I am here.
Perfect.
Thank you. You really did a great job last meeting.
Thank you.
All right, so do we gotta wait one more minute, or can we just go?
I believe we need to wait till our notice time, so one more minute.
Okay, all right, I'm good with that. So on the page two, Amy, of this packet, it says Kevin Hartman called the meeting to order.
Ah, good catch.
I was just curious.
Well, I can fix that, and what you can do is we can approve the minutes with suggested changes. And if there's any other ones, we can make a note of it. So we'll let, you can save that in the, at that topic time.
All right, I got six o'clock. Okay, meeting called order.
All right, all commissioners are in attendance and accounted for. We have two vacancies, so that leaves us five, and you are all here.
Okay, oh, good.
So let's see, all the members here, uh, back before, see. Well, I guess at this time, we, if we have to, any changes in the minutes?
Oh, no. Okay, so that about Kevin wasn't in the minutes, right?
No, it should say Grant's name, and so.
That's fine, okay, so I move the minutes to be approved as, as, as read.
Okay. Second, can I second? I think I can. Shall we move on then to the citizen comments?
Did you say all in favor?
All in, oh, all in favor, say aye to the minute.
Aye.
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 She is hearing, okay.
What about Mackenzie, did she, I didn't hear her, she's muted.
I did, yes.
Okay, she did.
Any opposed? Sounds like that motion passes, Grant.
Okay, I like, motion passed, we're good to go. Moving on to, let's see, citizens' comments? Do you have anything, anybody there that's typing or asking?
It doesn't look like we have any citizens on.
Okay. So, we'll move on to the public hearing for, the city file.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I, can we go back to city staff reports? I don't know what happened to that, but I had a short report to tell you.
Okay.
Yeah. At the, for the JR Meadow 2 subdivision, there was a lot of discussion about that trail to the back field between lots 39 and 40, do you remember that?
The trail, that was gonna go.
Is this private road or something close to that?
No, it's just a, it was just a pedestrian trail between the two lots, so the kids could walk straight to the back field. And there was, we were uncomfortable, thank you, Amy. Is there a cursor that you could go, go over?
They're going to the school ground gate?
Yes, there's not a gate. And so, there was a lot of discussion about, well, can we really build that? Isn't that fenced off for a reason? And, and so, after you made your decision, we contacted the school district, and they sent a letter today that said, after consultation with administration, the facilities manager, representatives of the City of Carlton, the school board leadership, and the developers, we believe we can support the construction of gated access to the YCES school grounds and trails from the new development. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay.
So I'm just wanting to make sure you know that they say it's okay. We were a little uncomfortable without their word, and so it was an after-the-fact decision. And so everybody's happy, including the developer is fine with it.
So with that, if you put a gate there, isn't it now that for people to enter a school grounds, they have to go through the front door?
Well, I, that's what we were worried about, but the new, Bill Rhodes, the superintendent, said, no, we will lock it at the proper times, and we'll have it unlocked during school hours. And he didn't seem to feel they, and he wouldn't talk to everybody about it, and nobody seemed to think that that was going to be a problem. They liked the idea of having easy access for the neighborhood, and they said yes.
Hmm, okay, I mean, I don't have a problem with it myself. I was just under the impression, I thought, and the reason I'm saying that is because when I used to go to the new schools to pick up a child, my son, I had to go to the front door and ring the bell to get access to the grounds.
I was surprised too, but they just seem to be fine with it. And I think we should go ahead and let them build it.
I, sorry, Mackenzie here, I was just going to comment, if the, if the school district is open to it, I think that's a huge benefit if we're trying to promote pedestrian accessibility, let alone the impact on this neighborhood, that's, that's giant. I think that's extremely beneficial. And thank you, Carol, for following up on that after the hearing.
Good, I'm glad, I think it is a benefit too. And, and I'm, everybody seemed to agreement, be in agreement, so go forward with it. Thanks for listening, and you can move on, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, yes. Okay, city staff report, minutes approved, move on. I guess for now with the public hearing.
Uh, I'll take the lead, I think. This is not a public hearing officially, this is a public meeting, was advertised, because all your meetings are, and we're not at all ready for a public hearing on this yet, I don't think. But the topic is before you tonight to consider 5G cellphone service. And then providing for some standards, potentially, in our zoning code or some other city ordinance or city code. But there are places, cities that put these, this kind of information in their zoning code. I provided a one-page sort of memo letter on this, there you go, it's right up front. And just, I don't know if everybody knows all about this topic, but I didn't, and so this was partly for my own good. And, and so the city has already prepared an ordinance to adopt it, but it's a little bit premature. And so we're taking, kind of taking a step back and bringing it to you. So first of all, what is 5G? I'm just going to run through these points. It's the next generation of cellular technology. It's about six to seven times faster than 4G, which probably most of us own. And it's, and what they need to do is incorporate new software, new hardware, antenna, and, and to get these new frequencies, to get these faster speeds. And so, the city attorney drafted an ordinance and, and sent it to you to consider some things. The FCC regulations, just a little bit of background, overrule local regulations in order to win the 5G global race, apparently. And it's intended to eliminate municipal costs to deploy 5G antennas. It could affect franchise fees and some, some city control of our right-of-way. The city now receives franchise fees from CenturyLink and Comcast, internet services from Online Northwest, WAVE, and Comcast, and most cellphone providers serve Carlton. So that's a little bit of background, and, you know, they're, they've provided, the League of Oregon Cities has provided a model set of code regulations which you receive in your packet. And then we also reached out to some other cities, Sherwood, Oregon City, and Woodburn. And obviously, there's no reason for us to start from scratch and reinvent the wheel. We should find a set of standards that we like. And frankly, I thought the League of Oregon Cities was very long and not that easy to read, because there's all these words in between about, it just was not, it was helpful, but I thought the Sherwood ordinance was really pretty good. So backing up for a minute, some of the public concerns I came across were the electromagnetic emissions. They do have warnings on those boxes. There will be higher emissions from these antenna. And of course, power, power consumption will increase. Administrative controls, based on our circumstances, there would be some kind of a city permit, and they'd have to get state and federal licensing. City approval and deviations can be by, either administratively, like the city manager could be the one to issue the permit, or it could come to the planning commission. And so in trying to figure out what we think, which route we think that should go, the kinds of questions and issues that arise are locating new antenna, which are usually in the right-of-way, somewhere on a pole or ground-mounted. The existing power poles in Carlton and lights are owned primarily by PGE. And you all know better than I do, because I really haven't looked for these things until now, there. But communication poles, I think have a lot of attachments to them right now for, for cellular. They may be owned by CenturyLink, Brian didn't know for sure. There's no inventory of what's out there. And so 5G receivers could be as many as every 300 feet. Do we want to limit that? I don't know. Do we want to identify geographic areas where they would not be allowed? For instance, due to emissions or other reasons, the way it looks, or local streets and residential neighborhoods should be probably, in my opinion, a last priority, and that's what Sherwood decided. They, they put their arterials and collector streets as higher first, first priority location, and the residential neighborhoods is the lowest priority. Is there a reason to limit the height and the size? Maybe, but I don't know exactly. And the 5G materials design screening, would we want to do, add some things about screening? Do we want to consider prohibiting those kind of poles that would require replacing street trees? Do we want to consider only permitting on poles without overhead lines? Because in the long run, we're trying to underground all our power lines, so the less we put on those existing power lines, the less we have to deal with when we eventually bury the lines. And do we want to consider restrictions on advertising, lighting, generators, and the kind of things that might end up being attached? So that's what I have for you to consider, along with these three examples of ordinances and the model code. So I would, I turn it over to you all to talk about it.
Go ahead there, Bob.
Okay, my question is, right now, aren't most of ourselves phones coming from that tower up there, outside, that's up there by Bailey's? Am I right or wrong?
Don't know, where is Bailey's? Help me out here. How far?
It's dead out town, there's the nursery up there, and there's a big cell tower on top of that.
Out 40, out Highway 47.
Right, between Yarmil and Carlton, yes.
Those are the cell towers, right?
Right, yeah. Now, is that gonna be, is that at, will that coverable 5G be covered from that tower?
I don't, I don't know.
It's not the city limits, I know that.
No, sure isn't.
Yeah, that's county, I would think. So do we have a, okay, so in this picture that Amy has up here right now?
Right.
That, I'm assuming that's what we're gonna look at, those are the antennas?
From, from my understanding, 5G, you'd have to have a lot more in, in comparison to a normal, what we have right now. So they're kind of small, like you wouldn't have to have like a huge tower or anything, but you have to have multiple ones. So from what I read, you have to have multiple in the city, so there will be, like, sort of like in this picture in the post, but you'll have more than one in town.
So they'd be maybe every three or four blocks?
Yeah, something like that, the reaches is smaller, so all those is stronger. You have to have more of them to, to make it work.
So then how does it work? Uh, like Carol said, it comes to the day that Carlton undergrounds all their, all their power, all their wires, everything, utilities. And then somebody's gonna have to come back in and put up metal poles to hang these antennas on? Is that how it would work? Or some kind of a pole?
Well, I think what I was alluding to is, you know, that's a long ways off, burying all the lines, probably, maybe not, but so you may not want to put them on lines, poles that have the lines, but then we need to do an inventory to see what that means, and, and then what do we have left to choose from? Maybe there's nothing else to choose from in Carlton, in which case, if you're gonna have one of these every 300 feet, we probably are not gonna have a lot of choice. I, I was just throwing out some issues that come up.
Yeah, no, I understand that. That's my, I guess my question would be, when the company that would install these, do they have any literature that tells us exactly how many feet apart? If, if we didn't hang them on pre-existing power poles? And do they make these antennas somehow camouflage, so to speak? Like they've done with some of the cell towers, how they make them look like big fir trees?
Yeah. I don't think they're, they're, well, that's more about the device you're putting it on. So maybe the city would like to create a telephone pole or power pole standard that they have to be fir tree-like. And then all of these things would be attached to it. So that's a different approach. But like I said, they can be, as what I've read, as close together as every 300 feet, if you want to have maximum service.
Can I give just a couple of additional points that might add to the conversation?
Yes. Who is this again?
This is Anthony Stewart.
Oh, sure.
The 3,000, excuse me, 300-foot is something I think you could reasonably expect in a major metropolitan area. In a town like Carlton, where both the density is, is not, and the usage and the demand is not there. You know, we're talking about a wide spectrum here. And so the first question I have is, is this preemptive? Or has this, have one or more businesses expressed interest in, in developing in Carlton?
You know, honestly, Anthony, I just got handed this a really short time ago, without any background, and everybody was seen to be in a hurry to do it, and I don't know.
Okay.
I, I just think maybe trying to get ahead of the curve and be ready when it comes might be the, what's going on here?
Yeah, I, I just mean, is, I was kind of asking rhetorically, you know, should we, should we speak with, perhaps have a, seek a mayor-to-mayor discussion with a town like Sherwood that has, what's about a year or so's worth of experience, and whether or not, after the passing their ordinance, it prompted, you know, further discussion with one of these utilities or providers? And if so, you know, was that of a benefit to them? Where are they in the process? I think it'd be helpful to, to talk to the ones that are a little bit closer to town. Just like everything, I think this technology will move out, you know, in phases from the, from the big cities, and we're getting there. But if they can teach us a little bit, I know that they're a real, really good executive team and city council over there.
And where, which city?
That, Sherwood, I agreed with you.
I agree with you, I think that's, of the three I saw, I liked that model the best.
Do we have, give a recommendation to our mayor or our mayor-elect? I don't recall when the inauguration will be. You know, to, to reach out and set up a meeting with, you know, their, their counterparts over there? Or, or how, how would the city-to-city discussion proceed?
Well, just like you said, I think, you know, I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves with this ordinance, honestly, without having any information, and just handing you a 10-page document to say adopt it, so we, we'd be ready when they come.
Yeah.
I think my page was 89 pages.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's like you shake, well, I find it, it was kind of confusing.
Yeah.
Mackenzie here, out, out of curiosity, Carol, who, you, you, not to put words in your mouth, but you mentioned that this was handed to you not too long ago. Who handed it to you? How did this come about?
Well, I, I believe the city council's been talking about it. I, I haven't been involved in the conversations, and I, that's all I know. The city attorney wrote this draft, or wrote the resolution, and, and had, and it was attached to the model code and said, you know, go get the planning commission to weigh in on the design standards.
Personally, I, I feel like, and I, I could be alone in this. Personally, I feel like I don't have enough information at this time, at least for, I mean, to the, to the comment that was just recently made of, you know, have local businesses weigh in on this? Is this something that our, our citizens are actually looking to, to do at this point? Not to say we won't do ultimately. Secondary, do we really understand the ramifications of the decision we're making tonight? And I could, and I could be alone in that.
May I, this is Linda, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Linda.
Yeah.
Uh, could I have permission to, to speak and kind of fill you in on what the council had?
Please.
Yes, go ahead, Linda.
Okay, thanks. Basically, we were given, we were presented pretty much, not even as much as you guys have here at the last meeting. And what the decision was, was that this was a two-part process. One is, is the part that you see that Walt did, that is the, the ordinance for permitting it. But he was just drafting that as a start. The other part of that was that we would send this to the planning commission to look at, to look at what the requirements are going to be for these 5G towers. They, as Carol said, they're smaller, there are multiple towers to be situated in, in, within the city, they have to be closer together. So our intent was to send it over to you guys to, number one, look at the tower design and, and have some, start now to have some discussions. I don't think there was any expectation that you would make any decision about anything tonight other than that you would discuss what kind of process you want to go to and what kind of research and information you're gonna need to figure out what our city is going to be requiring with these, with these towers. How many are gonna be, how many are gonna be allowed, where they're gonna be put, what they're gonna look like? Basically, you get to, you get to call the shots on this. So I'm happy to do whatever, that's, that's, you know, that's up to, if the, you want, want to start with it right now and, and have the mayor go over and, and reach out to, to the Sherwood folks, that would be, I'm sure you talked to Brian about it and, and figure out what to do. But anyhow, that was the idea, was not that you would be making any kind of decisions right now, tonight, but more that you would be starting to get the information and get the, get yourselves educated with it and tuned up on it and figure out where you want to, how we're, how we're gonna do this.
Well, that, Mackenzie here again, thank you, Linda. That personally makes me feel a whole lot more comfortable, that this is more of a work session. I, not to derail our entire meeting here, I do think that it would be very valuable to reach out as early on in the process as possible and talk to other jurisdictions, whether it be Sherwood or a different jurisdiction who has recently gone through this process and kind of seen, hey, I hate to say, but is it worth it? And again, what are the ramifications, and what should we be looking for? While I know all of my comments thus far have been very much at the, the 10,000-foot level, to go back into the weeds quickly, I think that we should look very carefully at this concept of whether we allow them to attach to our existing infrastructure. I know, Carol, you made a comment along the lines of, well, yes, we want to underground our existing overhead services, and yet when does that really happen? As you can imagine, and especially if you look at a, a town like Carlton, it seems like an overwhelming concept, in that there is so much of where do you possibly begin? And yet the majority of jurisdictions, it's actually a requirement of development. So let's say I were to have a project, and there's existing overhead services on my frontage, I'm required to underground those services. Now, if we as a city start adding these 5G services to existing overhead, I feel like we could, we could complicate that system very quickly. And again, not to say that that's not in the best interest of the city ultimately, I just think we need to look at that very carefully. I also wonder, I know, Carol, you had a great point in the little summary that you typed up. Thank you for, where in the city are we comfortable with installing these towers or services? And the, the easy place to think is, oh, well, we don't want them in neighborhoods, so let's not allow it in any residential zoning. And yet, the majority of Carlton is residential zoning. So again, I don't necessarily have an answer there, it's just personally, those are two big items that I think we need to think about carefully.
I, I, I think this is premature, but I also think that some, a lot of people work at home now, and maybe 5G is gonna be used more than we think in a quote, residential area, because a lot of people that used to work outside of the town are working in the town. But I think we need a lot more, I think we need more information. And I know what the law, our city lawyer is trying to do. We've been behind so many times, like we didn't have anything on food carts, which I'm sure nobody remembers. But that was quite a war that went on, like after the fact, like the cart, the wagon has left, and you have nothing here. So I think that we need to, I think the thing that, at least we're having to talk about it, and now. So I think that we need to, I think the thing that at least we're having to talk about it, and now maybe get at least have something on the books, so we're moving forward, so we're not caught by surprise.
Yeah, and I, it seems to me, I'd like to know what the providers think that would work for Carlton. I mean, do we need two? Do we need ten? You know, I think we need to talk to them, because even though they were involved in this, developing this model code, I I think we need to get a grasp of the scale for a small town. From them.
Yeah. Would that then be something, what you just said, Carol? The mayor of the city council has to go and get, talk to those, talk to the provider to get more information, or do we bring him in on a separate meeting? To, and are there more than one providers? I mean, is it? I mean, are there two or three different companies out there that we could ultimately choose from or something?
Well, I mentioned, as far as we know, is that this is mainly phone, isn't it? Or is it internet? I mean, or is, does that obviously come together? It's what?
It's mostly internet, minimally phone. This is connecting not just cell phones, but in in theory, a wider variety of electronics to kind of create an integrated electronic life. Now that, like I said, is happening in big towns like New York, in LA and London. It's not what Carlton is going to be. So this is primarily going to be internet infrastructure to help with the city, and it would supplement and likely be an opportunity for competition to come to the town. And even if you didn't want to work with them, it could generate general gains for the entire community as well as possibly jobs. So just something to think about. I appreciate the concept that, you know, this is all residential. And then there was an excellent point that we're all working from home. So I think we definitely need a lot more information if we can get a presentation about it. I think this is something that is well worth our time.
So look at my my notes, say that, and I want to verify if anybody has any other providers, Online Northwest, Wave, and Comcast? Or is it Century Link?
T-Mobile.
Comcast.
T-Mobile.
T-Mobile.
There's Verizon.
Yeah, it's, here we go.
Verizon.
There's HughesNet is a competitor for like internet out here.
How do you spell that Hughes as in H U G?
Howard Hughes, H U G.
H E S.
Yes.
Don't we only have in Carlton right now Century Link and Comcast for internet services?
Should have Online Northwest too, as well as any of the the cellphone or, you know, phone-based internet service providers like Verizon and AT&amp;T.
And Century Link, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
I think it'll be an interesting opportunity for more competition and ultimately lowering the price for people. The more access they have, the better. So we just have to do it in a way that's thoughtful and secure. And there was an excellent question about whether or not these can be camouflaged. And so one thing to have the city attorney look into is where does the federal preemption end? With respect to the city's ability to mandate camouflaging or other aesthetic modifications? Because these SWFs, as they call them, are high-power, you know, high-output, very important equipment in putting anything in front of them as opposed to the cell towers we're used to, looking like a tree. There might be a different effect, and there might be limitations. I've only ever seen them, you know, where they're exposed, like they are in the photograph in our our thing, but there there may be camouflaging options, and if there are, what is our authority to modify them?
This is an example. I I drive by it every day. Newburgh did that with one of their giant towers. It's like one of those big pine trees. I don't know if anybody has ever seen that either. It's on College Street, like just north of the tracks of Newburgh.
College and Illinois Street by the old processing cherry processing plant. Is that what you're talking about?
Very well done, Grant.
Yeah, I can get you right to it.
And it does. It looks like a big plastic fir tree.
Hey, but it's better than a giant ugly metal tower.
Exactly. It looks better than the towers you have heading into Dundee up there behind the cemetery. Or like the ones Bob said about going out the highway forty-seven to get thirty AM Hill.
I know I'm reiterating a little bit here, but I feel like, again, more information would be fantastic, whether that be reaching out to other jurisdictions who have already gone through this process. I also think it's a fantastic idea to reach out to the providers. As Carol said, we're a smaller jurisdiction, we're a smaller city of, you know, it's very possible that we're we're making a mountain out of a molehill here, and, you know, maybe the the implications of what we're talking about really isn't that big of a deal. Let alone the, I would like to think that they'd be willing to come forward and give a presentation as this is in their best interest as a business.
So, yes, that's a good tip. And who would I start with? I, you know, I guess I'm trying to figure out where to.
You might find out who 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 actually wants to service communities our size.
Right.
I mean, everybody wants to take care of Portland and Salem, but who wants to take care of smaller communities? I'm sure it's especially Nick. Maybe I'm wrong, but.
I I highly doubt that he is the individual. But as you all know, I work in development. And I happen to know the Comcast designer for the area here, who handles all of the new Comcast designs. I would be glad to ask him if there's an individual, at least at Comcast, who is, this is kind of their their genre or their niche.
That'd be a huge help.
Yeah. And Carol, you can also look at page twenty of our packet. It gives you a list of individuals who are directly connected to each of these companies. Quick search on LinkedIn. The, it's pretty straightforward content. There's a few from AT&amp;T and Verizon cited.
I don't have the packet on the right here in front of me. I'm looking at the paper version. Was that the advisory committee that worked on this?
Yep, it's page twelve of the advisory committee.
Thank you. Got it. Yes, I I figured that would be an obvious one. I just wondered if there's something even a little more honed in and.
These would be the high horsepower individuals that'll get you the info you need pretty quick.
Yeah, and and but I'd also like to talk to one of the providers in.
The area, yes.
Carlton.
Does Carlton have a historic district or registered buildings that would be implicated by parts of this, you know, model code?
No.
Nothing's historically registered?
No.
Okay.
Well, maybe the lab barn.
The building that holds Pike Wines used to be an old bank. That one is on the state register.
And isn't it Winterbird Barn?
And that one was recently added as well, yes.
Oh, good to know. But they're not, we don't have our own standards. Is that the state, the national register?
Yeah, that's the state.
I think one thing to think about would be in the city, especially because the model code really prioritizes addressing the downtown and a commercial area. You know, thinking about if there's integration that could be seamless into the existing, you know, framework of buildings that we have and possibly engage with, you know, community business members. Might be a a unique opportunity to kind of spread the wealth, you know, if it's the type of thing that can help the community, you know, you might be able to generate some more funds for the city that way. And then kind of hide it in an area that's designed to really focus on that prioritized area.
A question, could these towers, these antennas be put on top of some of the downtown buildings?
In concept, they could be able to. There's, I've seen them before on the tops of buildings.
Where they're less, I mean, I would think then they might be less noticeable towards the middle of the building, if if possible to do that.
Yeah, you're getting into private property, and I think they do like to bunch up together on the power poles. But.
If they put them on power poles, do they have to pay a fee to whoever owns the power pole?
Good question.
And if they do, they have to pay a fee to that the owner of the power pole, what would the difference be then if they paid a fee to the owner of the building?
My my only comment there, although I I do think that's an interesting idea, Grant. My only comment there, and I'm not sure, is if we have any height restrictions in our community development code for those zones that we may need to add some type of exception if we do go forward with this.
I think we we already have a likely exception for any power poles and the like. But, yeah.
Just just to to double check, and of course, Carol does have a very good point there about we're kind of straying into private property ownership rights. Although certainly something to look into. Just in that we're touching on on private property owners now. I I love the concept that we've already talked about reaching out to local businesses. I know in the brief conversations I've had with with residents of Carlton, it seems like there's been a push for more communication between all of the the commissions and the councils and and city staff in our local community. I think for, and again, not today by any means, obviously, we have a lot of research to do and conversations to be had. But I feel like this is the type of decision that would be great to get some public feedback on.
Sure. And and this by no means is not a public hearing. We're not ready for that. It was kind of misnomer there. This is really meant to be just a discussion tonight. But but yeah, that's before we get to the public hearing, we'd want to have input from the public.
Absolutely. And I, just to clarify, I absolutely meant down the road, Carol. Just of of all of the the things that we do, this really rings true to me. And I I brought up the idea of of residential, and it was greatly pointed out, actually, that with more and more people, especially after the year we've been through, working from home, that maybe it would be a better idea to put it in neighborhoods. And again, I just feel like this is a decision that we should, sure, we have public input for maybe even before a public hearing of some type of community outreach, not today, just eventually. Thank you.
Would you think that the planning commission could be the citizen advisory committee per se in this case, or do you think a special committee should be formed to do this? Might be a little bit of a stretch to staff another committee, but.
No.
Yeah.
I I think what would be nice if the city manager maybe had a public meeting with a representative, if we have somebody telling the provider, that could maybe tell them what would be the implications of a five G network in Carlton.
Yeah.
I know it's kind of hard to do that way that we're kind of with these meetings being restricted to Zoom. But maybe we could, maybe six feet apart, I don't know where, but, you know, maybe well, or maybe the maybe we could do it by Zoom. I don't know.
You can get a lot of people on Zoom, and and people are getting used to it.
So what? I was talking to Christie about, she talked about doing these things on Friday now, some kind of tidbits of Carlton or things that are happening. She's putting some posts on the city website. Is this something maybe that could be brought up and put there? Question to you, Amy. What do you think?
That's not the best probably way to use our website. I mean, Zoom would be, we could, we could initiate with Zoom through the through the website, but we could do a Google type document where people would submit a form through the website, and we could do it that way, but that would be our best bet. Website-wise, it'd be more just paperwork-wise.
A Google survey?
Yeah, a Google poll or survey type thing. We can, we've done those in the past. We haven't had the best turnout, to be honest, with those, but it's, they're always an option.
Yeah, we we need to have a structure first. I, you know, we can't just, we need to figure out what we would be asking. And then, you know, kind of know the answer before we send it out to the public, at least the logistics and the technical issues and the constraints and the law and so on.
Well, then maybe it would be good if we were to reach out to the city of Sherwood, talk to them, and reach out to the different providers and get answers or some kind of a presentation from the providers to really tell us what they, what it is, what are they offering us?
I I absolutely agree. I do, I want to come back to the idea of definitely, first of all, definitely reach out to Sherwood, definitely talk to the service provider. I love the idea of the city manager and a service provider holding just kind of an informational meeting for citizens upfront. Especially if that could happen prior to our public hearing. I feel like that would be beneficial for all parties, including us as a commission, if the citizens who are coming before us have as much information as possible, it's going to be a more productive meeting.
Yep. Do we wait for the city manager to be selected?
That's looking like February. Before they're actually in the building.
Does anybody feel like this five G thing is going to happen real soon, or would we be comfortable waiting till February, or? Anybody have any idea at all?
Linda, are you still there? Could you weigh in on, has the city council had any kind of idea of a timeline with this?
We have, we had no conversation about it other than to, let me just see if I can turn my video back on here so you can see me. I can see how stupid I look. Anyhow, yeah, the city council just had the information given to us, like I said at the last meeting, and Walt said that he would draft the the ordinance. Beyond that, I don't think there was any timeline mentioned or any structure mentioned for where we go from here, other than asking the planning commission to start figuring out how we're going to handle this thing. I'll, I, I guess if if I were on the planning commission, I I would say maybe doing what you were talking about, reaching out to Sherwood and getting the the information from them, getting some of that stuff going. And and then once you get that, then we can, maybe you can look at that and see and and bring it back to the council, and and we could see from there what the next step is that we want to take. I don't I, I think we're all kind of in the same boat. We're all just kind of trying to figure out where we go from here.
What do you think about this, waiting for the city manager?
I don't, unless there is some burning need to get this done within the next two or three months. I, I would think that waiting for the new city manager probably would would be fine. And in the process of doing that, you could wait. You could go ahead and be doing a lot of your research and finding out more and getting more information for yourselves on on what's going on here. And then by then, when the city manager comes in, I would think that you'd be more up to speed and and maybe sharing some of that information with the council so that we would be more up to speed with it, too.
I think that's a great, a great point, Linda, that we can start conversations with other jurisdictions now. It's also occurred to me that we've got the holidays coming up. We're thinking of February of, oh, it's a couple of months away. In reality, we're going to have a real slow month very shortly. At the same time, thinking more on the city manager as as much as this wasn't really the point, it may be a great opportunity for the city manager to to have that almost immediate outreach to the community. I know, at least for, it's kind of a sinker for them in some ways, but just to to get exposed to to citizens and hear their input on what could be a major issue right up front, that that might be a good experience for a new manager.
It also might be something to ask the candidates for city manager and see, maybe somebody's had more experience that line or had experience along the line. I'm just saying. Might be something else to consider.
An interview question.
Yeah.
And something to reasonably notify them of, even if it's not asked. Asking them to essentially come into a small community and step on a hand grenade is is something reasonably acknowledging on the front side.
No, a hang grenade is the food carts.
As as a professional, I I, as, as, as a professional, I can tell you, 5G makes a food cart look like a taco stand in the middle of a big buffet. It's just, it's just a little piece.
Yeah.
There's a lot of controversy surrounding the whole 5G issue. I'm not really sure what's, what everything is. What all the implications are for, for this, but yeah, it, it could, it could get really interesting. And I, I think maybe the more time you guys have to do some background and research on it, the the kinder it might be for all of us.
It was, I, I was, uh, I was trying to say it in a nice way, but it was my comment previously about whether it be the city manager or not, any service provider having an informational discussion with the citizens prior to public testimony at a public hearing, that it would be beneficial for all parties. Um, it's part of what I was trying to get at. I think we all know this is a very controversial topic. Um, thus as much information as we can provide prior to a hea- a hearing, I, I think is, is for the better.
So then Carol, what do you think? We first start off, you reach out to the other communities, Sherwood, what we've been talking about and the, and the providers, and then that information is brought back to the planning. And then we can discuss and talk and go over that again, you know, maybe in the December meeting. I move, we don't have a m- meeting in December, that we have it in January. Just because December is a bad month for most people. Maybe, maybe it's just me, but damn, that's my s- suggested.
I'd say that's very typical of a lot of commissions and even other boards that I sit on of, nobody even dares try to have a meeting in December.
Well, you're, um, this yeah, your December meeting would be December fourteenth. Normally.
So with, if we don't have a December meeting, you come January, you're going to be less two people.
Who's that?
Well, myself, I won't be, if we don't do De- December, you know, I will be off of planning in January. I'm going to, to be on city council.
Oh, I missed that. Congratulations.
Grant and Gier may both will be going into the city council.
Okay, well, well, when do you two guys want to have the next meeting then? So then we'll, we'll leave it to Bob and Mackenzie? No, I mean. Why can't we have, uh, I don't know. I just hate, I hate December meetings. I just really tried to avoid them. So do you think, Carol, you could get some information prior to say, you know, I agree that you get deep into the month of December and you're not going to want to mess with a meeting because of Christmas and holidays and all of that type of stuff. Or do we just?
Still talking about the same day?
The fourteenth, right, is what the next one?
Okay.
Uh, do you think?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. That was wrong. It's the twenty-first.
Well, the fourteenth sounds much better. I mean, if you have to have a, you know, I think twenty-first is way too close to Christmas.
Yeah. Sorry about that. Uh.
Or is it really, or again, like you said, is it really that necessary? Do we need to? Um, even though the two of us are going to be off of it, do we really need to jump in this quickly? Well, if we're waiting for a ci- ci- city manager, that's not going to happen till February. Yeah.
Could, even if we don't have a, a formal meeting, could we still just be provided information? I mean, if we reaches out to Sherwood, you know, let's hope that Sherwood responds in a somewhat reasonable timeline. Could that just be emailed out to the planning commission members? And then at least we're continuing to kind of wrap our brains around this concept during the month of December. We come back at the start of the year. Hopefully we're, we're getting a city manager. We're moving forward with the process. Cause it's not like we're actually trying to make a decision in December, right?
No, we're not ready for that.
We're just trying to figure out what this is all about.
So maybe just an informational email, and that's assuming that we can get information out of Sherwood by this point. By December, I mean.
Well, I can share start on all this. I, I don't want to muddy the waters, but another way to incorporate these kind of rules is just in the stand, not in the zoning code, but in the municipal code. I mean, is it a planning issue? Or is it a utility issue that streets, utilities, you know, sewer water? There's two ways to go. You can put it in your zoning code or you can, or you cannot. And the zoning is, is your bailiwick. Just thought I'd throw that out there to really mess you up.
Could I, could I throw in that the reason we, we sent it over to planning and zoning was because there were concerns about the design of the, um, towers, how they would look and where they would be placed. Because it sounds like they're from what we were told, there could be a significant number of these going in even around Carlton. So there would be concerns about what they would look like, how they would be put in, what, if they would be camouflaged. And what kinds of building requirements would be involved in that. And I think that's why we were sending it, uh, asking that the, uh, planning, look at it.
Yeah, I don't see us getting into designing the antenna, but I can see us camouflaging them.
Yeah, exactly. There, there would be concerns about where they would be played, where they would be placed, uh, in relationship to homes, to, uh, streets, to crossings, there are significant areas in town and, and what they would, uh, how obvious they would be. Would they be like in your face or, you know, some, so.
Well, so maybe the homework is for everybody to drive around town and see what's out there now. And, uh, are the, are the towers and poles kind of littered with antenna from these providers? Send me a few pictures and or, I don't know, just think about it while I'm trying to collect what I can collect at my end and we'll, we'll keep a dialogue going by email. If that's what everybody's, uh, willing to do.
Yeah, I think, I'm mad about getting this. If we just get information in December, that we can still keep thinking about it, reading about it and then move on from there. And like you just said, yeah, give us time. Next time I go to Sherwood, I'll drive around a little more and maybe see what some of these things actually look like.
And, and Grant and Gier may can have a leg up when we start talking about it at the council meetings.
I went up with a referred to.
I am, I'm transitioning. This may be the wrong time. I'm sorry, I'm transitioning, but we've done this twice now that we're about to lose two planning commission members. And it's my understanding, come January, we won't be able to form a quorum. And we cannot make decisions. Thus, if anybody knows anybody who wants to join the planning commission, I think we start, we need to start reaching out. Um, we're going to have a serious problem if we don't pick up more commissioners.
I've been reaching out to people in town.
Good, good. Thank you, Grant.
I've been talking to different individuals and hopefully they step up and show up and get involved.
Hey, maybe that should be a requirement. If you're going to ditch us and move on up to the city council.
Yeah, we have two city council, yeah. Just because we promoted you up the city council, both of you, come up, come up at least two members each. Because, because we know that only one of, one of them will show up probably.
If you're lucky.
If we're lucky, yes. And then I picked, uh, Mackenzie, she can become the new chair. Good. I second that. Okay.
Bob, are you staying on or you?
Well, yeah, I don't know. Until they kick me off, what the heck? What do I got to do?
Good. We need, we need you.
I have a couple more questions, Carol. Uh, I might be able to switch back. Um, as I was listening to everybody talking, the question that came to mind is what are the differences for these small wireless facilities, these 5G versus the current, if any, code provisions for what they call in the, in the regulations, macro site wireless facilities, the larger cell towers? Um, I think taking a look at the precedent that we have is both educational as to how prior commissions and prior councils have thought about this, as well as informing how we might want to, how, how we might have changed all as a community or, or things we want to keep a little bit different for other reasons. If there's any data on past applications, if we have the cities in, you know, prior permitting of wireless facilities in the past, how many have been received? Um, you know, was there, um, what was the city's experience as far as reviewing those? Um, and then, um, you know, if, if we could, if you're talking to people, um, as we learn about these towers, it would be really good when you're talking to, um, the representatives from these companies. How many of the poles in town can we reasonably co-locate? Can we reasonably plan for the next ten, fifteen years to put on, even if it's a temporary, um, you know, even if it's a temporary co-location that is agreed to by the city saying it, when we go underground, these are going to have to move and here's a timeline. Um, you know, that, that might be a compromise in the middle. And in that timeframe where those limited, um, co-located towers or, or poles are, um, in the timeframe between the, the time that they're installed and the time that they need to be removed, there's likely going to be even better technological development. So in the part of town that needs the most, um, you know, could benefit most from the upgrades, would be in a position to be in a lifecycle ready for upgrades. So thinking of the long term here, we don't, it's going to take the community better part of twelve to twenty-four months, if not longer, to really think about and dive into this, but I think if we have any ability to, to compare what we've had to do in the past, I think it might guide where we're, we're going to be going.
Thank you. Good input. You're not going anywhere, are you?
Uh, Grant, I moved it. We adjourned the meeting. All right. Any seconds?
This is Anthony. I'll second.
Okay. I guess we're adjourned until a later time. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Oh, with the re- recommendation, the Mackenzie is our next chairman. Well, I thought you already seconded it. I recommended it. Okay, I seconded. Okay, we got it. Put it in the minutes, would you?
We'll do that in January.
Okay.
Hey, everybody, thanks for your time.
Good. Have a great holiday, guys.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you.